Calling me order. And again, a good evening to everybody. Catherine, I know that Roger isn't with us and just to let you know if if you're uncomfortable on any of the motions that we're we've got outlined in the agenda and would like to hold off till he gets back.
You know, you know me, I'm probably going to be comfortable with most of them. And if there is anything, I'll let you know.
Most of it are things that we've we've discussed, so.
Exactly.
Take it from there. All right. Catherine and I here and Roger is excused and happily doing one of his bucket list items with him and his wife happily up in Alaska. And I tried to talk him into joining us. I don't think I got anywhere. Hear from the public. Going once, hear from the public, going twice, hear from the public. Moving on, first selectmen's briefing. Just a few things. I'd like to remind everybody in the minutes to reflect that we are we have posted an advertising for the position of town treasurer. I encourage everyone to go up on the website. If you have any questions, please call the selectman's office. Job descriptions and applications are available. We encourage anybody that may be interested, please come forward. I believe the cutoff date on that, Chris, is when?
The 29th.
So the cutoff is the 29th. Again, if you have any questions, please call us.
Have you received any any resumes yet? No.
I haven't seen any resumes, but I have had several inquiries, people calling who would express an interest and I I'm not going to mention names or whatever, but did indicate that they intend on applying, so. Hopefully that will be well responded. Unfortunately, I'd like the record to show that last week we had we're not sure when it occurred, but we had a considerable amount of vandalism to our South Cemetery on Pumpkin Hill Road. And I just like to emphasize, in case there's anyone that is not aware of it, the cemeteries are considered private property to visit them as a courtesy, not a particular right, the tombstones themselves are private property.
It's not a, yeah, it's not, yeah, it's a courtesy extended by the owner.
Right, the tombstones are private property and we've got an estimate from one of our vendors that the actions of one or more individuals there probably total over $30,000 in damage.
Oh my God, did they break tombstones?
No, they didn't. It has been reported to the state police and there's a formal report and investigation going, but what they did, Catherine, apparently was take a wire brush. And I don't know if they thought they were doing a good thing, but it certainly wasn't. And they took a wire brush over the names and the dates on, you know, tombstones that are 100, 200 years old there or more. And again, I'm not sure what their intention was, but it certainly did a lot of harm. And what it does, it expedites the deterioration of the stones themselves.
Yes, it does.
So anyway, we've reported it to our insurance company. We've got at least one price in from our vendor that normally does restorations. But it's not a good thing. And again, there's a if anybody happens to know who did that, we appreciate them coming forward and letting either the Connecticut State Police through troops see no or report it to the selectman's office.
So actually, it doesn't sound like a teenage prank.
No.
It sounds like someone who didn't know how to treat a tombstone.
I, the fellow, Chris, I don't remember the name of the company that does our restorations.
You're asking.
Anyway, what they had reported, what he had reported was several years back in one of the Carolinas, either north or south, there was a, a, a organization. And what they did was they were on the website. And if you wanted to try to locate a relative or somebody of historical interest that you had, you could go up there and they would identify. Well, they did this same sort of thing to a couple of cemeteries down there and they had them on their website, on their, on the, on the internet. And they actually ended up, two of them went to jail for it. So it's a serious issue.
Yeah.
There was reports of one person that the state police are following up with hasn't been identified yet, but was seen up there. We actually required, recovered a wire brush. And of course, that's going through fingerprint analysis right now. And so, sorry to have to report that, but I people realize those, the tombstones are private property.
Let me know if there's any way I can help. If you need someone to make some additional inquiries around town. Thank you.
Appreciate that very much, Catherine. I'd like to extend on behalf of the board and everything, congratulations to the, our new fire chief, Paul Varga, and his new crew of officers. We wish them the best and of course, thank them for their continued many years of dedication to the community and what they do. Obviously, a vital service to our community. And I'd like to take an opportunity to thank retiring chief Tom Borman for his years of service. I think he's got collectively over 40 years in service on the fire department. And while I understand he's going to stay somewhat active, he is also going to be our new emergency management director.
He will do a fine job as that.
And you know, he's, Dave Gardner is going to assist him in a, in a less active role than he's been doing. As you know, Catherine, I think David Mike, excuse me.
I was wondering who you were talking about, Michael Gardner.
He's been trying to retire for a couple of years. But, and he was instrumental in helping to talk Tom Borman into doing this. So much thank to both gentlemen.
I know he was his top pick. Okay. And he's worked with him quite a bit in the past.
Well, he was sort of, I don't know if it was official, unofficial acting as his deputy. And I know many of the programs that I listened into from emergency management with the state, they were both on them, so. Much appreciated of both gentlemen. Remind everybody that June is license your dog month. Please do that. See the town clerk. Also something that you can follow in and get the particulars of our tax collector Linda Gagny has issued new hours for the July tax collections and that. And if you have any questions, again, go up on the web or call that office.
And that'll be in the citizen?
It will be in the citizen and it's also on our webpage.
Yeah, some people don't go to the webpage. I just want to make sure it's in the citizen.
Yep, absolutely. And we are still finalizing plans for our July 4th weekend celebrations. Our intentions right now is that we're going to have an open house at the fire department. Tentative times will be one to three. We encourage everybody to come down, bring the kids, look at your fire trucks and your tax dollars in action and much we have to be proud of there. We're also going to do during the same time, an open house at our Public Works. Our guys have been busy the past couple of weeks down there, getting the building prepared for some visitors and inspections of all of our Public Works equipment. And we're finalizing plans for a parade on the 3rd of July, starting at one o'clock, that's Sunday, the 3rd. And right now we've got the Ashford Corollaries, the Bevcock Band. I understand Uncle Stilted, Uncle Sam is going to be there and we're working on some other surprise entertainment. So we'd ask you to partake. It will be beginning at the firehouse and ending at the, going into Trump Colane like our normal parade that usually lasts about five minutes, but should be enjoyable. I know we had some people concerned that we didn't do it on Memorial Day. We heard you. And we, we understand, or I understand that people want to get together and start rejoicing about some of the blessings we do have in this country. And we think that's a good time to do it, so.
I'm disappointed that you didn't contact me since I had volunteered to help with this.
Well, I'm.
That's fine. That's fine. If you didn't want me to do it, that's fine.
No, that's not the case at all. And I apologize for that, Catherine. And we still need help with that. So I'm going to call on you. And that's all I have. And item five on the agenda is acceptance of the minutes of June 6th.
I'll move.
I'll second that. Is there any discussions? All in favor, signify by saying aye, aye. Thank you. Hear from boards, commissions, committees and departments. Jim, I see you there, but I think you're a little later down in the agenda, so we'll get to you pretty quick.
Anytime you're ready.
All right, sir. Old business, discuss reopening strategies. We are staying on, on course there. I know that on item C, under what we were about to talk about is COVID updates, but we continue to monitor from CDC and Eastern Highland and the numbers continue to improve from our end this week somewhat drastically. But it's worth keeping an eye on. We've had a relative of one of our staff who happened to be out of state that came back positive to COVID. So it's not something that we can take carelessly and we have to certainly be on the alert to be cautious. Well, we're optimistic. I think we need to be cautious and we'll continue to do that. Item B, Ashford Advisory School Building Committee and the chairman is here with us. Jim, I will give you the floor and let you make whatever comments you'd like. And of course, if Catherine and I have any questions, we're, we're not bashful.
Certainly. Well, you know, I think, you know, Bill, in the most recent communications I've attempted to have with the superintendent, I've copied you because for whatever reason the superintendent is choosing not to communicate with me. I've had to work around him on multiple occasions. And I have actually very much considered resigning from this committee simply because I can't accomplish anything if I don't have the cooperation of the incumbent superintendent. And that is, that is just not happening.
Jim, I'm sorry to hear that. Have you had an opportunity to talk with the chair of the Board of Ed?
I have not tried to do that. You know, I've tried to work directly with the superintendent and, you know.
And you, and you were right to do so. What I would suggest is that you have a conversation with the chair and let her know your concerns. There certainly have been other concerns raised and she's more than aware. They are more than aware. So, and if you need her phone number, you let me know.
Yeah, you know, I'm also, I'm also concerned that, you know, we may not be on track with the things that we need to be on track with because, you know, I did, I did meet with him. I met with him with Mike Serrano virtually, who's been our consultant for these projects. We gave him, we gave, we literally gave him templates of the letters that he needed to write. And, and I think some of those got written, but, but I don't know. We gave him a list of steps that he needed to accomplish. But again, I, I don't know where that's at. I mean, I, I would think at this point he should be having conversations with the Board of Selectmen about, you know, looking at, you know, getting, you know, getting some bonding at some point, you know, to pay for Ashford's portion of the school roof, because, you know, we've, we've made a commitment to fund our portion. You know, I also got the sense, and Bill, maybe you've got some insights that I don't have here, but I also got the sense that until I kind of was a pain in the ass here a couple of weeks ago, he wasn't intending to submit for reimbursement for the oil tank replacement, which would have been, you know, 100 and something thousand dollars of taxpayer money, just, you know, pushed out and never recovered.
Well, I, first of all, Jim, I think it's a legitimate concern that you have. And there should be communication there. And I will certainly, first thing in the morning, try to intercede and touch base with both him and the chairman of the Board of Ed. These are important projects that is vital besides whatever issues are going down there. These are vital that we at least be on the same page. I understand that the application is in process and I am concerned to hear you, you haven't been involved or given the opportunity on the oil tank process. I know that the Board of Ed has approved the 135,000 towards that project, which represents about half of the cost on that. But it is vital to get the grants in because I believe there's at least a 63% reimbursement.
Yeah, it's, it's whatever our current reimbursement rate is. And you know, that, that, you know, that money may be coming out of the, you know, the 1% fund or unextended, non-lapsing fund, whatever we're calling it this week. But you know, but that money gets to come back to the Ashford taxpayers and go into the general fund.
That was the plan.
And that's, and that's really important that we don't miss those steps. I mean, that, you know, we're, we're, we're obviously behind the eight ball with this oil tank project because that was something that was supposed to be happening this summer. You know, and I, I had suggested that he reach out to Phil over in the town of Wellington because they, they did the same exact project at the Hall School, you know, two years ago. And, you know, the response I got back was, well, you know, I've done plenty of these. I know what I'm doing. So, well, you know, here's a resource that went through this. They know what the steps are. They got it done quickly. Maybe you just want to reach out.
Well, I think, I think that was good advice, Jim. And again, I will and Catherine makes a very good suggestion to contact the the chairman or I'll make an attempt to contact Jane Irvin and have her give you a call.
Yeah, that would be great. I mean, you know, as you know, you know, I'm, I'm a, I'm a very busy person. I work more than 60 hours on a normal week. But I'm also a community minded individual and I agreed to do this, you know, for the benefit of our community because it's important that I, I think to set examples for my kids and to show people that I'm willing to give back to my community that's, you know, giving so much to me in these years that I've been here.
Well, you've certainly been a vital contributor over a number of years, Jim.
Yeah. And your leadership on this has been vital.
I'm sorry to hear that you're discouraged right now, but I urge you not to quit or consider resignation. Let us get a handle on that. And I mean, if we need to set up a special meeting on that.
I will, I will tell you that I was ready to quit, but Christine talked me out of it. She said, you know, come to the meeting tonight and talk with the Board of Selectmen and, you know, see what, see what we can do and, and you know, try to move the ball forward. And that's, at the end of the day, I just feel ineffective. And if, you know, if there's a personality conflict or something there that, you know, he, he just, you know, doesn't care for me and feels like there's somebody else that he could work with better, I'm happy to, you know, I'm happy to step aside and do what we need to do because these are projects that are vital to the future of taking care of this building.
I agree. And our board has been carrying this on our agenda for months, looking for input that we could get, but this is vital importance. And I couldn't agree with you more. And I appreciate your candid comments, Jim.
Well, you know, the, the last, the last communication I gave you was a workaround, you know, with regard to the solar stuff to expand that, that scope because I couldn't, it, it was over a month. I emailed him. I called him, I texted him. I reminded him that we needed to have a conversation. And then I knew you were having a meeting and needed to act on that. So, you know, I sent the email that basically said, well, if the school board is in favor of it, you know, the committee doesn't have any angst over it. So, you know, so that's, you know, it's kind of where we've degraded to and we're at the point where we're not making progress and we need to change that.
We'll, we'll, we will get on that right away and give you whatever assistance we can, which is.
Please know you have our full, please know you have our full support.
Thank you. I just have, you know, we have to figure out where we're at. And, you know, untangle, untangle whatever mess there is or isn't. I mean, maybe there isn't a mess, but, but, but I don't know that either. May, maybe everything is on cue and on par, but.
You're the person who needs to know.
Absolutely. Absolutely. We will make that a priority, Jim.
All right, sounds good. I'm gonna, I'm gonna mute myself so you don't have to hear the dogs anymore.
I don't know whose dog is barking, but now our dog's barking.
You all know how to reach me, so I'm gonna take my leave.
All right, sir. Thank you very much. And again, thank you for all the work.
You're welcome.
Counting. Hang in there, Jim.
Absolutely, Jim.
Thanks.
Okay, next item is item D, set date for the public hearing and slash special town meeting. The agendas will include approval of the proposed ARPA funding and approval of the grant road Paul Belanger item, land change.
If I understand correctly, the town council gave us some suggestions on the wording and we've taken those into account.
That's correct.
Okay. So what I'm looking at that has that I received via email today is what the amended version, if you will, that takes into account what the attorney suggested, correct?
He wrote the notice.
Excellent. Okay. So Bill, I would like to make a motion to accept this for the town meeting.
Very good, as, as the drafts that Chris sent out, the latest draft. I will second that motion, Catherine. The only thing I'd like to add to it, and Chris has been awfully busy, but we're also working on, as we had discussed, of course, this notice will be in the citizen and that's the deadline. We got a bit of an extension out of it, but so that will be in the citizen. We're also going to have the list of the ARPA funds. But what we've tried to make and we're not sure we're going to make it, if we don't, we'll put it on the website and certainly make it available is have a bit of a narrative under each of those line items for the ARPA fund, just a brief explanation. Then at the meeting, we can elaborate. I want to ask those, you know, the fire department and Public Works that may be in there with some of their projects to, to also elaborate a little further, but.
Yeah, I, I had asked for those concise descriptions.
Yep. So that's also in the process, but.
All right, good.
Anything else regarding that, Catherine?
No.
Okay. All in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much. Under new business, discussion regarding Ashford Citizen, if you don't mind, Catherine, I'd like to carry that on to our next meeting. And at some point, I'd like to, you know, include Sherry Much in the discussions. And just, just, you know, start looking at a few things that haven't been visited in many years and take a look at policy and update things along with a other list of few things that we have to do that too.
So that will be on the agenda for our next meeting, correct?
That's correct. What I might do is ask if Sherry can join us at that meeting. I just, we can sort of lay out a plan of attack on it, some of the.
I can't, I can't imagine having the discussion without having her there.
I agree.
You might want to put this off until the meeting, the second meeting in July, because the next public hearing town meeting.
Good.
Okay, that sounds good.
Good point. Thank you, Chris. All right, item B, discussion and action on the 2022 slash 2023 salary increases for non-unionized town of Ashford employees. As you know, Catherine, this is something historically that we've done every year. And I'd be glad to make a motion to, to move that to be an equal compensation to those that are reflected in our union contract for this year.
Actually, why don't you let me make the motion since you're the chair, so to speak?
I, I'm happy to do that.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to increase the salary, salaries for non-unionized employees, the town of Ashford employees to be of the same percentage as was done for the union.
And I will second that.
Any more discussion?
Is there any more? Is there any more discussion? I have none. All in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous. Thank you. Item C, review article regarding present status of the Kettle Rock. Chris worked on this pretty diligently and I discussed it. It was sent off to town council. Put it in writing. She thought it was a terrific article and unless there is objection, we will put that into the citizen for this issue.
Chris always does a great job on these articles. And I can't imagine somebody else actually writing this one because of her history with it. So do we need to have a motion or you're just fine to send it off?
I'm comfortable either way, Catherine. If we want to show our support for it, I know we could certainly make a motion.
Okay, I'll show the support for it then. I move that the article be published in the Ashford Citizen.
And I will second that and good job, well done, Catherine. As you know, we're closed on Thursdays. Last Thursday, Chris worked from the morning all the way. She finally, because I was out of town. And hopefully I was going to get back early, which I didn't. I called her finally around four o'clock and I said, well, I want to be there shortly. She's nevermind, I want to leave here. By the time I got into town, it was 5:30 and she was still here. Then she had.
You're a tattletale.
Then, then she was going to take Friday off and ended up working. I, I finally had to force her out of the building about one o'clock on Friday. Because she told me it was imperative she get out by 11. So I think we're well aware of her her dedication to the town and what Chris does for us.
I have seen this many, many times with my own eyes. So yes, and I appreciate it.
Thank you. I think she's blushing, but thank you, Chris.
It takes a lot to make Chris blush. So thank you, Chris.
Thank you for the accolades.
Okay, item D under new business, act on acceptance of Savage Systems' proposal to provide IT services in a combined contract with the Town of Ashford and Ashford Board of Education.
So what, if I understand correctly, with this contract, um, we're actually saving a little bit of money. And we are, we would be signing it first and then Ashford School would sign it second. And then it would go into effect. Is that correct?
That's correct. Just a little history on this and you're correct. The estimates that I've seen, we will get improved service with actual onsite coverage and at least one day a week. Besides the service that they've been giving us. And there's another item that we pay about, and that's where we're going to get the savings, somewhere short of $300 a month to them for additional services. Well, those are going to be included in the contract. It's a total savings that I've seen about $5,000 for the town end of it. And the other part that I like about it, Catherine, is that they are locking in that rate for whatever term we accept. And I support the five-year term on that under those conditions. As a side agreement, they've also agreed, the fire department has their own contract with Savage. They've also agreed to give a side letter to the fire department because they're going to be in the area or whatever, also to lock their rate in for five years or whatever the term of our contract is. Now, what I've seen from the school and last week, I've asked the superintendent to arrange a meeting with the chairman of the Board of Ed and his business office and himself and Eric from Savage has agreed to sit in if he's invited to that meeting to give, to elaborate because of course, theirs is much more complex than ours is with the contract. And I know that the superintendent did send out a notice. It was either Thursday or Friday. So we'll be setting that up in addition to whatever we're doing here tonight. But the email that I saw, and I believe you were, it was forwarded to you or you were copied on, Catherine. There's a savings of, they're, they're suggesting over five years of close to a half a million dollars on that.
The one thing I, I didn't go back to really look at. Um, the one thing I, I didn't go back to really look at in detail is, uh, in the event that there's a problem with their service, if there's something we don't like over those five years, and we want to, uh, uh, let's say we're cancel the contract. I don't recall what the, um, penalty is.
There, there, and I, I don't have it in front of me, Catherine, there is something in there about a non-performance.
I'm just about to look and take a quick check.
And, and, um, what I didn't mention, we also had our town council, Duncan Forsythe. Uh, I had a meeting with him and Eric, and we went through that contract pretty thoroughly. There were some things that Duncan just wanted clarified in some distinct language separating the Town of Ashford from the Board of Education, and there were some language changes that, uh, Duncan was instrumental in, in helping us with that.
Oh, so then you know what the penalty would be if you guys went through it in detail?
We, I did, and, and I had a disadvantage, Catherine, I don't have it in. I know there was discussion, but I can't refer you to a specific part in it. And I don't know if it was title termination or non-performance.
Okay, bear with me, because I had trouble printing this, so I had looked at it online. Okay, thanks. I knew you would.
You agree that if you need to terminate this agreement before the end of the commitment term, you agree to pay us current agreement fee multiplied by the number of months left in the current commitment term within fourteen days of providing this notice, notification of termination?
So what you're really, what it's really saying is, is that let's just say we were gonna cancel in year three, for whatever reason. We would have to pay them for the next two years, and we'd have to pay them immediately. Is that correct?
I'm reading it again to myself.
Yeah, I'm looking for it in my email here.
It's on page three of, what is this? Page three of a letter from Eric addressed to Bill and Craig.
Okay, I'm, I'm going into terms and conditions. Is that where it would be?
No, I found what, um,
Spirit, um, I, I know you're saying a letter, but I don't see a letter.
Okay, I have a page that says overview, finer details, our general terms and conditions, commitment term. And then the next page says termination.
Okay, so bear with me, because I got three documents. And I'm just checking to see which one this is. Oh, overview, okay, I'm looking at it, and finer details.
Next page.
Commitment term, termination.
I, I, I found it, Catherine, and.
I'm looking right at it, Bill.
Yeah, I, I, I interpret that the way you interpreted what Chris read.
Well, I, I guess I'm a little surprised that the, uh, town council would say that that was, uh, okay. As much as, um, so this says, if we break the contract for any reason, and it doesn't, and believe me, I'd like to get this contract signed, but I'm just a little concerned here about if we don't like something, how do we get out of a bad situation? So the terms, in terms of how, who can cancel and why, the, the, I'm looking through reporting, business, business reviews. So every quarter, it's gonna be, they're gonna be reviewing this with us, and we have to make sure we've got somebody participating.
I might say that I believe they've been with the town for eleven years.
I, I don't care about that. I met with the guy once. I wasn't that impressed, but if in fact this is a good contract, that's a different story. Okay, I met with him when we were trying to figure out what to do about, uh, online meetings.
That's Eric.
Yes, Eric. So is there anything in here that says who can co, who can, what the, what the um, pre-established agreement is to what you can terminate for? I know they have a number of things in here that say this is.
Okay, I found that.
What we have to have, where is it?
I found that.
The page.
It's in the next document that you have Savage Systems' general terms and conditions.
Okay, that's where I started. Okay, go back.
And that's one.
And conditions. Thank you.
It's the fourth page, and it's, um, item number four, it says termination.
Got it.
Is there a number on that page, Chris?
No, but this document's not page numbered.
No, but it does have items within it numbered, so if you go to, uh, four, number four, termination. Let me just read this quickly. May be terminated by us upon ninety days notice, written notice. There, it says four, four dot four, should you wish to terminate this agreement before the end of the commitment term, you agree to pay all of the remaining payments up until the end of the commitment term. And I'm just gonna go back to what they are promising to give.
Well, if you look at four point one point one.
I already did, yeah.
Fail to fulfill in any material respect its obligations under the agreement.
Yes, that's what I was, this is where I was gonna go back and make sure that I'm looking at what their obligations are. What they say they're gonna deliver. Reach any material term or condition of this agreement. So I'll be a little patient with me while I just go back and check, okay?
Take your time.
Their help desk hours? So they don't have a they, they have monitoring twenty-four seven, three hundred sixty-five days a year, but they don't have like any aspect of a guaranteed uptime for our system. Let's just see here. There we go.
Catherine, are you looking at appendix C by any chance? Because it does give an agreement of what the inclusion list is that they will.
See in which document, which document?
Well, I'm showing page eleven. The initial part of the document.
Okay, so I received. So we have the letter is one. And that's got so it's appendix C on that very same document. There it is, okay. And we have backend systems and company-wide configurations all set up and configured, because we've been using their product, right?
Correct.
Go to.
And the hardware was purchased from them. I'm sorry, Chris.
Look at page two of the first document. It's the title page says Savage Systems Computing Evolved.
Their presentation?
Yeah. So if you look at the first page, it's solutions overview, and it tells you what they cover. And what, and what you get.
So I'll, I'll just tell you, one of the things when you have a system, okay, so this is the, this is the signature page, uh, signature document. It looks like for the contract.
Yeah.
And so what you, usually you have a target when, um, you have a system, and the target is a target availability. So it's kind of, uh, as part of that, is that the system will be available. Uh, well, let's put it this way. Anytime the system goes down, you have an agreement as to, depending on the kind of a problem that caused the system to go down, how quickly they can get it back up again.
We have.
And so really, I don't see it.
Guaranteed response time, it's on the signature page, page seven.
Oh, there it is. Okay, bear with me. Okay. PC eight hours. Okay, so the entire company offline, it's an hour. Uh, get the guarantee is an hour, which is kind of, kind of amazing. Response target is fifteen minutes. Okay, I'm good. Thank you.
Alright, now if they had a signature line for the town.
You know, thank, thank goodness during my tenure in the seat here, we have had nothing major, nor what I would call major. But we have had some breakdowns. I know, I don't know if you saw the letter that uh, Linda Gagnon sent to us about something that happened to her a week ago last Thursday. Um, when her system went down, because we were closed here with renovations by the electric company. She was using the library. She said they were literally back to her within less than fifteen minutes. And, and worked until it got straightened out. They had her back up online within a half hour. And I've got a couple of those sort of letters from our folks unsolicited. My personal experience with them is they, they've been very prompt and diligent in getting whatever issues that I've had. Again, they're, they're relatively minor, um, taken care of.
Okay, so their guaranteed response times look good, and that what you were just describing, Bill, is what I had my teams do. Um, when we put systems up.
Yeah.
So, uh, and maintain them. So, uh, I, I'm just surprised that it's in this particular page of the document. It's kind of something you would expect in the other, other part of it, but this works fine, as long as this is a signature page. So when we, when you sign this, this first page thing, this Savage Systems Computing Evolved, it looks like just a presentation.
Yeah.
Um, but it looks, it's got a signature line on the bottom. And it doesn't have one for the town, as Chris was saying. So, uh, the, first of all, I think that the, the one for the town should come first. You know, after Eric's. And then the schools after that, because that's the sequence this is going in anyway.
Yeah.
And I don't think the school has driven this process. So do you know who they worked with at the school? Did they have conversations with them?
The business manager and Craig, and I don't know who else.
Okay. Uh, they don't have their IT guy anymore? He used to work for IBM.
They have two, you mean Scott? Scott, Scott is their primary guy, and then he has a backup. They have two IT people, uh, presently up there.
Yeah, I've talked with Scott at length.
Yeah.
Okay. So, uh, from my perspective, this looks fine.
I'll be honest with you, in, in looking at the, the, the format of the contract and everything, and, and of course, I've been used to these state contracts that go on for thirty or forty pages and have contradicting language in all of them or whatever, and that was why I was more comfortable having Duncan take a look at it and actually, um, you know, bring forward his questions on it, but I, I was a bit uncomfortable with the format itself, but, um.
As long as, yeah, as long as this is, I'm just looking to see the signature page. Their signature, signature portion of it. Um, somehow refers to the rest of it. Our work, unless it's just considered all one big happy package.
Well, I.
Under the, under the circumstances.
I hate to be a advocate or whatever, but I would assume if the school refused their end of it, or whether, because let's face it, they're the lion chair of, of dollars on this, um, we would have to renegotiate.
Right, page nineteen of the second document.
Yes, ma'am. Let me take a look.
By signing below, you agree that you understand and accept the terms of this agreement. Savage is first town, a second school, the third.
And the thing is, that is also, let me just see. See, that's what I was looking at, and that's where I didn't see the guaranteed response times.
That's appendix F you're looking at.
Wait, I'm looking at appendix, I'm looking at appendix A. So this is guaranteed response times and priority levels. Okay. Just looking to see if they contradict the other one. Ah, you know how they got around this? What they did was in the first one, they said, these are examples. Oh, and they said it here too, examples. As opposed to issues, okay? So I'm assuming that by signing that first document and signing this document, you have covered everything. Or everything is covered, this in both documents.
I, I believe you're right, Catherine.
I would be, I would be comfortable with that. And, and the, the reason I say this is I've had a lot of experience with IT contracts. So, um, they, apparently they want you to sign both documents, so both documents fit together. I didn't see anything that contradicts one contradicting the other.
Do you want to make a motion to that, uh, effect, Catherine?
Sure. Uh, I make a motion that, uh, the town, uh, accepts. accept the contract with Savage for services for five-year period.
And.
You know what? And we're going to have one more discussion when I get a second on this.
And authorizing the first selectman to sign. Is that what you mean by the town?
Yes.
Okay, I'll second that motion.
So the only other thing with discussion, Bill, is that. You know, if we don't like something, you know, if the, the the complaints, the only complaints we can make are ones that are in the contract is what, as to services is um, that they've said that they will provide. So what needs to happen is if we have situations where they don't respond as quickly as they said they were going to, or they don't get, and they don't get an item fixed, it's an important item that's in the list, it has to be documented. Because if we have a series of those, and I just think about Otis, if we have a series of those, then we have grounds to terminate the contract. The problem is, is that even if we terminate the contract based upon their bad performance, we still have to pay for five years. Did, who was it Duncan that looked at this?
Yes.
So I'm thinking about whether or not I would want to have that. They, they kind of have a situation where if we're not happy with their service, so what? You still have to pay for it.
Well, that's basically the position we're in with Otis. If we.
We don't want to be in that kind of position with any company. We don't want to be in that position with anybody.
No.
Not, not when we have a choice. Bill, what you're thinking?
Well, I know Eric is out of town until next week. If you're uncomfortable, Catherine, and, and I think you have some justified concern regarding that. I guess we could postpone this pending clarification.
Yeah, let me ask what the, I know that we wanted to get this signed tonight. The sense of, tell me what the timing needs to be on this. Is there a sense of urgency? Because we are like down a man or what is it?
Our, our, our formal agreement, as I understand, expires with Savage the end of this month.
So won't now, we're on the 20th. Um.
Now, I, I, I don't mean to infer by saying that, that they will refuse to come out because they don't have a contract, but we are leaving ourselves out there hanging a little bit.
I, I would push back on not, on the whole business about having to pay if in fact, you know, they, they don't meet their their obligation. They may, they may have this written up just, I don't know if it's boilerplate or whatever. And I don't know how many other towns they're providing service to, although I know they are providing service to other places.
I believe the last, because I asked that question too. I believe they have, they're covering seven other towns. And Board of Educations.
So I just need to take this in for a second. So it's not just us. If we have issues that are not resolved in a timely fashion, and we have multiple instances of that, much like Otis. But the school doesn't have those issues. It'd be, it would be unlikely that one of us would have the issues and the other would not. My preference would be to push back on that particular clause. And with something to the effect of paying for the rest of that year. But not if it's.
Three years.
Yeah. Exactly. That would be, to me, that would be a fairer situation. And let's see, what did they have in there if they fail to, I mean, if they, um.
Are cure rights.
Yeah, if, if they, yeah, what, we know what we, our obligations are. What did they say? They, if they terminate the contract, I think there were three things there. But then they have the write-up about who, what gets paid as a separate item.
I got the impression by non-performance, most of what they were talking on our end of it would be if, we had outdated or equipment that they had not installed.
Yeah, they're talking about us, but this is a two-way street.
Right.
So I'm just peeking back here. They told, you know, they told us all their requirements. They told us what they would, what's included in their services. And. Service requests. It's got to be in the other document. So notice that they, by the way, in appendix B of the big document. They do say response, response time guarantee, guarantee exclusion list. Issues lodged outside of their business hours are. They. They do not need to adhere to their response targets. This is the third bullet down under appendix B. And. They've got, in the last document, which is, what's that, general terms and conditions. They have. Force majeure.
You, you have a page number, Catherine?
Uh, no, these are the, these are ones that are numbered by the bullet numbers.
Okay.
So. It says. Where is it? Force majeure. Item 18, force majeure. If we are unable to supply, if they are unable to supply any goods or services due to circumstances beyond our reasonable control, we may cancel the order, even if the order has already been accepted, or cease to provide the services by written notice to you, in which case you will hold us harmless. We will not be any liable for any breach of contract or to do any matter or thing beyond our control. Failures by third parties, transport breakdowns. So, and I think the sticking point on this when it comes to contracts is the fact that even if they don't do their part. And we want to cancel the contract. If you go back to under four, number four termination. We can do, we can do this. We can cancel the con, terminate the contract. After we tell them 90 days in advance, if they fail to fulfill obligations under the agreement and do not cure such failure within 30 days of receipt of written notice. Breach any material term or condition of the agreement, fail to remedy the breach. Terminate or suspend their business operations, which is not the big deal. And then under 4.3, it says if either party terminates this agreement, we will assist you in the orderly termination of you agree to pay us for rendering such assistance. And then 4.4, should you wish to terminate this agreement before the end of the commitment term, you agree to pay all of the remaining payments up to the end of the commitment term. I would like to see that particular 4.4. Um. Be, we would agree to pay all of the remaining payments up until the end of that calendar year. Uh, no, um. We, we call it budget year because it's going
Fiscal year.
July to June. Yeah, of the, the the annual year that they have within the five-year period. Do you understand what I'm talking about, Bill?
Yeah, if I remember right, the, the contract we presently have with them coincides with our fiscal year.
And this one will too, because you're really looking to get this signed for July. And it'll stay in force for five years until the, in the fifth year, it will end at the end of June. And actually, they say it will automatically renew. In there right up.
Well, if, if I, the sense I'm getting, Catherine, is as written here, you've got some legitimate concerns. To authorize.
Right, right now, to tell you the truth, that's the only one that bothers me.
Yeah.
The other ones are kind of boilerplate.
Yeah, I mean, force majeure, it's pretty standard language.
Yeah, it is. I was looking to see, you know, if, if they were at fault.
Yeah.
How we get out of it without having to, you know, eat all of the cost. And we shouldn't have to. So, again, I would like to see something different under termination 4.4. It would be, they would say.
Is that the only one, 4.4?
From my perspective, that's the only one that when all is said and done really counts. I'm assuming that we have the other things in place that they have said that we, they require. They know what we have because they've been working with our system. Right?
Yep.
So I.
Actually, I supplied most of, I don't. We bought the Tyler system from them. Is that correct, the software?
No.
That, that was directly with Tyler?
Okay, so that's, that's third-party software.
Okay.
So, and I was thinking, you know, if they're, if they're managing, if they're doing anything to Linda's machine, you know, she's got third-party software on her machine.
Notice the town clerk. So does. Town clerk does, land use does.
Yeah.
Melissa probably does.
Yeah, so Bill, at first, at first blush on this. My biggest concern is that 4.4, but we should probably take another look at the third-party thing to make sure that they understand what we have. And I haven't gone through that part in detail to look and see if, and I'm not sure what we have either. I, I just know we have, Kara has a system that she's accessing, and I don't know that the system physically resides on her machine or something she's accessing online, which is fine. But anything where we have special software installed on our, on the, anybody's machine that was not purchased by these guys or that they weren't aware of. Then, and we have, and they have, there's an issue with that machine and everything, you know, they're not going to be very helpful.
Yeah. I get the impression that we're not ready to move on this. And what I would think, Catherine, if you could don't mind, I know you have 4.04 and, and, and third-party software or whatever. Could you shoot us an email? And I will certainly take this up and, and ask for responses or clarification.
Actually, it will also, I know that it costs something, but it wouldn't hurt to check with town council and point out 4.4.
Yep.
And ask if they have a recommendation for the wording for it. Because we don't want, you know, I can see it being fair for us to pay for the end of that fiscal year. But not up through the end of the five-year period, should something happen in year two, three, or two, or two or three.
I think that's a legitimate concern, Catherine.
Yeah, and, and what would be great is if we could get council to give us what the wording would be for that, then you can take that wording to Savage.
Yep.
And say that we would like that. Interesting. Okay, and I, I'll take another look all the way through this. I couldn't print it out today. I had a problem with my printer, but. Um. I'll do that and I will send you an email. About anything I have, you know, it seems a little like we're locked into something that could be a problem.
Do you want to withdraw your motion?
Actually. Is that what we do or are we just, yeah, I can withdraw the motion.
Two things, we, we could both abstain from this time and it would not pass. Or we could just withdraw that and carry it on our next meeting. Or.
And if we withdraw it, is it recorded as being withdrawn?
That's my understanding. I would, I would withdraw my second also.
Yeah, I think it's cleaner to withdraw.
Okay.
So.
Withdraw my second.
And I withdraw my first. And thank you for being patient while I went through this.
No, I appreciate that. I know that this is up your line of expertise and I appreciate it.
Uh, yeah, I just, you know, we already have had a bad experience. I'm sure we've had other ones with other vendors as well. It's kind of like. Don't want to get into something where we can't get out of it if it's not our fault.
Yeah. Okay, we will.
That was fun.
Now, that was fun. And go to item E consideration, consider submission of application for the 2022 Small Town Economic Assistance Grant Application, which is due August 15. Chris, I know you wanted to put this on the agenda, did you have any comment you want to make regarding this?
Well, one of the things that we've talked about was, applying this to Southworth Drive. But, you know, we need time to get figures together. If that's it, we're gonna need time to get costs together for anything we submit for, so it doesn't give us a lot of time, Chris.
Catherine, I don't know if you recall, but I guess the last couple of years, Joe has been doing research because Southworth Drive is, is seriously deteriorating, and that.
Oh, I heard about it when I was, when I was sitting in your seat.
That project, um, not exact figures, but in, is in the area of five hundred thousand dollars, which is in line with the limit of the, this particular grant. So, I've asked Joe to fine-tune his pencil and recheck figures and see if we're still within that ballpark.
So, let me just ask a dumb question. Um, what I encountered was when we had the storm damage, when we had the awful storms in July and August of last year, someone complained about an area of Southworth where the dirt and rocks came down from the high side across the road, and they were not happy it wasn't cleaned up by Public Works. Um, the dumb question I'm going to ask is, does the town manage that road? Or is that?
That part of Ashford Park is a town road.
Okay, so, so what's in Ashford Park is all considered town roads?
No.
No, okay, that's.
Southworth Drive is, which is the main.
Just that one.
Circle around there, the little side roads, those belong to the association.
Okay, that was what I wasn't totally clear on, thank you. So, so Chris, which you really are, in terms of us considering submission of this application, is this for you to start work on this application? Um, or is this?
No, I could start work on it, but Julie has to get the figures and the engineering together.
Yes.
Martin Heff did a webinar to announce the grant opening, and there were two things that give an application preference. One is a, what is, Bill, ten percent match? Ten percent match, and the other is shovel-ready or nearly shovel-ready.
And so what you're, what you're looking for from us tonight is, are you looking for a motion for us to say, yes, we want to submit an application for this economic assistance grant?
I, I looked at this more just to give us a heads up that we're working on this to report to you in the near, to the board in the new, near future. I mean, I, there's no way, we have not appropriated, nor do I think it's probably feasible that we're going to get money dedicated to help us with points or to get this grant. But I have asked Joe to look at this and see if we fall within that definition of shovel-ready, and he's fine-tuning the figures and everything on that now. That, when we were thinking about it, that was the only project, and it was one of our larger projects that we thought we might be able to put in for this grant for.
Okay, so what this really is, is discuss submission of application for this grant. It's not considerate. If it's considerate, then I'm thinking that we're acting on it by saying, yes, we want to do this.
I think we'd like to put it together and then submit it to you for approval to submit it.
Right.
I think it was more, more in line of an update to let you know what we've got in mind and what we're working on.
All right, and the only reason I'm confused is because I would have thought that would have said, discuss submission, um, instead of consider, consider to me is you're making a decision. Um, okay, so, yeah, it sounds like we should be trying to get this money.
Yeah.
However, we can get it.
Okay. Uh, anything else on that, Chris? I think that's about it.
No, that's it.
Chris, do you need special support on that? You need Joe to do something? Anybody else need to do something for you to be able to put this together?
We've met with Joe, I had him in the office, and we've let him know what our thought was, and he's, he's doing his homework on updating everything.
All right.
Prices now unfortunately are moving targets. So I think we've, I think we've, everything is in line to try to bring this together, but I think the intent here was to bring the board up to date where we are on it, not necessarily get a, take action on it.
Okay.
All right, item F under new business is a board and commission appointments. Chris, do we have the name of the gentleman that we're recommending? Or we intend on recommending at the request of the Inland Wetland Commission to appoint as our wetland agent?
Just a second, let me get the, you guys should have a copy of Lenny's email.
Was that in our package?
Yeah, I don't see it in.
Last Friday.
I don't, I don't see it in what I have on my desk, Chris. It's not to say you didn't mail it and it didn't get printed out.
First of all, Lenny does a great job with this in terms of finding people.
He did, they interviewed them, he's an existing wetland officer in another town. A, a, a complete background in that sort of engineering.
Oh, that's what I like about how Lenny operates, he gets all the information together.
Very thorough.
So if we have at least the name of the person here, I'm looking at my emails too.
I found it, I think. Nope, I didn't. Wait a second.
I'm looking at the packet.
Bruce Fitzback. Is the gentleman's name. F I T Z B A C K.
Okay.
Uh, guest to see is Mr. Bruce Fitzback has been recommended by Mr. Thorough to fill his position. This is Fitzback's resume was provided to the members, now lined quite varied and appropriate experience. Uh, many for Putnam, Connecticut, where he currently serves as the wetland agent, town planner, and provides other services to the community.
I'm reading it. This is from the, this additions to the agenda?
Yeah, it's ten minutes.
I'm, I'm looking at it.
Okay.
So I would like to make the motion to, uh, have Mr. Fitzback, I'm going to get his name right here, uh, serve on that board, and is that as a regular member?
I don't believe it's a member, it's, it's as the inland wetland officer.
Right, he basically, he works for them.
He is our enforcement officer for them.
Who did we have before?
Joe Thorough.
So now that's changing?
Joe retired.
Oh. When was that?
Um.
End of May, May thirtieth.
Oh, I don't think we were aware of it. So that's why I'm a little confused. Okay, so, I thought this was someone to go on to his board. This is not, this is separate from what we have in our agenda. Oh, no, it's inland wetlands agent, sorry. Okay, uh, well, under the circumstances, I make the motion, this person would, is it a contract that goes with this?
I don't think there has been before. I don't think Joe had a contract, I don't think Michael Gardner had one.
Do they get paid?
Yeah.
Yes, the, the board has funds appropriated to them to pay their wetlands agent. I don't recall ever seeing. I don't recall ever seeing a separate contract, Catherine. Not sure why not, but I don't recall.
Yeah, I'm thinking, they should have a contract. Right?
Well, that would make sense, but I don't remember ever seeing one.
Okay, so let me just think about it, um. I feel like a nudge for saying we ought to have, if we're paying somebody for something, and he's acting as the wetland, wetlands agent for that board, which is for the town, right? Then we should have something in writing as to what his responsibilities are and what he's going to be paid. Let me ask you this, if we have a wetlands agent that does something that, uh, are they bonded?
Covered under our liability insurance.
Okay.
Errors and omissions.
Okay, so if they, if they make a mistake, a significant mistake.
Right.
Um, there, with, uh, that affects the town, somebody in the town, and, and the town.
Yeah, you know. We can go, we can go up a contract similar to what Mike Tomato has.
I think, I think that would be a good thing, rather than not having anything that describes what he's doing and what he's going to be paid. The Inland Wetlands and Watercourses Commission is a board that the Board of Selectmen, it reports to the Board of Selectmen, correct?
Correct.
Yeah. So Bill, do you agree that we should have some kind of a contract? It doesn't have to be a complicated thing.
I'd like to see something documented.
I think it would.
I mean, I think they come in as a private, I, I, I believe that, you know, the intent is that they're acting as a private contractor on a month-to-month basis, but I, I'd be comfortable to see it something a little more formalized than that.
Yeah.
Right, there's evidently a time factor because not having a wetlands agent, I guess, is holding up something for planning and zoning.
Do you mean what inland wetland or planning and zoning?
Planning and zoning is the wetlands agent.
They do?
Yeah. We got a frantic email from Mike Tomato.
Did, um, excuse me for just a second.
It's not, that person needs to come over because I have a question for you for the meeting. Tom, I'll call you back. Thanks.
Sorry to step away for a second, I wanted to get my husband to make sure he knows what's going on. Is there a, let me make sure, um, uh, Joe Thoreau, our inland wetlands agent, has retired. Okay, and the inland wetlands and watercourses commission has another person they'd like to bring on as the inland wetlands agent. And we're looking at this, and, and it appears they don't have a contract of any kind for us to look at, as the selectmen, since they report to us. So, it's going to take a little bit to get a contract together, but I heard that planning and zoning had, there's something being held up in planning and zoning because we don't have an inland wetlands agent. Is that correct, that Mike Tomato is concerned? Have you had a conversation with Mike?
I have not had a conversation with Mike, and it's something that must fall within our regs currently, as opposed to needing a hearing or, uh, yeah, no, it has not been made, brought to our attention that there's an issue with the inland wetlands delaying any movement on anything. He did not have anything for the agenda, which is why we didn't have our June meeting, because we had nothing new to work on.
So did you hear that?
Yes.
So there may be a gap, there may be a gap in communications.
Can I jump in?
Yes, hi, you're on.
Yeah, I've been on, I just didn't have my camera on. So statute says that if there's a wetland permit required before a planning and zoning permit can be issued, there needs to be a wetland permit issued, so if someone comes in with a new house, and they want to get a permit, but there's wetlands, we need a determination from the wetland agent before we can issue a zoning permit and a building permit. So even for things that don't go before the Planning and Zoning Commission, we don't have anybody to make the determination that permits are or are not required. And just, you know, to receive basic questions, and, and we have someone in last week that was, they're getting ready to start a new home. They know they have wetlands on the property, but there's no, there's no person to refer them to for those determinations to be made. So I followed up with Bill and Christine to just get a sense of where we should be referring them to in the interim.
We've had, and we've had situations where something has come before the board, and there are still questions, or there are still pending wetlands issues, and if we have to make anything from a planning and zoning decision, whether it's a hearing or approval of a site or whatever, we have said contention upon, uh, the wetlands review and approval.
But that's just if it's going to inland wetlands, um, I'm sorry, that's if it's going to your board. If, as Mike, if I understood, Mike, you were saying there are a number of things that don't go to the board because they don't need to. It's just issuing a permit for something that is appropriate, meets regs, but you don't have an inland wetland agent want to sign off.
Right, so just like, just like I could approve things on behalf of the commission for a, an addition or a pool, they, Joe Thoreau did the same for the wetlands commission, so we just don't have anybody currently that can do that, and we've gotten some inquiries. We don't know where even to just kind of tell them who's filling the chair for Joe.
And can I make a suggestion that I think maybe will serve us all best? Can I make a suggestion that our board make a motion to appoint Mr. Fitzback as acting, um, in this position, and that our board recommends to the Inland Wetland Commission to submit um, a description of his duties with the understanding that we would prefer to have some sort of a written contract with Mr. Fitzback With the understanding that we would prefer to have some sort of a written contract with Mr. Fitzback. At some time in the near future. Hello?
I would have, I would have said that we approve pending, uh. Uh, completion of a written contract. Now, how long does it take to put together a little contract on this? Mike. Thinking about, when, I can't, I don't even want to ask Mike because I don't think that's his role. Um.
I, I think appointing him as acting agent.
So we're taking on, so.
Serves our immediate need. It doesn't change anything the way that they've been for years. But letting them know that we'd like to detail exactly what those responsibilities include. With the understanding that our position is that we would like to, in the near future, draft some sort of a formal. Contract with, because he is a private contractor, uh, with Mr. Fitzback.
And if he's a private contractor, it's not a big deal for him to write up a contract. If he's, he's doing, is he doing that for other towns?
I'm not talking about a big, yeah, I believe he's doing it for Putnam. I don't think it's a big deal, but I'm just concerned that this will cost us another month or so without. Any action and, and I'm looking in while this discussion was going on, some thing, other things that are pending with the inland wetland. If we don't appoint him, he can't start getting going on some of this stuff for them.
So Mike, what's pending?
Um, I don't know what Joe had pending that he would have handed off. But I know, like I said last week, we had a gentleman submit an application to, to build a new home. So we're going to need them to deal with that. Um, I don't know what else has come in. I'll, I'll be in the office tomorrow.
Okay, so the building of the new home for whatever, um, the timing, what's the normal turnaround on getting something approved?
Well, so if, if Joe were to look at an application and say, okay, this is within the upland review area. He could approve that as a staff permit, so he could do that during the week. Or he would look at it and determine he could not, and then he would tee it up to go to the commission, the inland wetland commission. Um, so, you know, really, the, we really just need someone that can make those decisions. Um. I don't know what else is pending that has come in otherwise. But I, you know, if it's a question of duties, I'd be happy to share. I know, I, I've seen another town, I can't remember off the top of my head. What the job responsibilities for an inland wetland agent entail.
Yeah, I, I get, I get that. This is, you know, a person that the town is hiring. Okay, um, he may be. Um, you know, the inland wetlands agent, but he's being hired by the town. When all is said and done, and that's why I think there should be some kind of a mini contract. That says, here's essentially what he performs and this is what he's going to get paid. And as far as being covered by our insurance, that's great. But I think there should be something, and Bill, there's no reason that. If they can get something, if they can, if Len could get something drawn up, if he works with Mike or whatever. To get something put together, or this gentleman already has something, uh, that he uses with other towns. Um, then, uh, the, there's no reason you, we can't have a little special board of selectmen meeting to approve that.
I can request that, if that's what you're comfortable with.
I'd be more comfortable with that because I just don't think we should just be hiring somebody without anything in writing.
I mean, if you, if you look down. On items on the inland wetland commission minutes that they submitted to us, making the recommendation of Mr. Fedback. They're showing some projects that they're working on, like ninety-six knot highway, uh, wetland remediation. New business, they've got Ashford Lake Association, construction of drainage. Um, they do have items, I'm not, I don't know of the urgency of them. But they do have some outstanding items that they like to, uh, get moving sooner rather than later.
It can take a day to put together something. If he's already got, if he's already working for Putnam. And let's see, uh, as a wetlands agent. Okay, it shouldn't take that long to put something together. It shouldn't take that, um, long for us to see it, and, uh, I don't know that it has to go to our attorney if we have a good list of the, uh. Responsibilities and we know what he's going to be paid and we already know he's going to be covered by our insurance and, uh. Lenny and the inland wetlands people have looked at his qualifications, then this shouldn't take long.
We will pass it on the agenda then for now and not take any action.
All right, and they can, they can get mad at me for that. But I just don't think we should just automatically bring somebody on without having anything in writing.
Okay, no action taken on that item.
Yeah, I'll talk to Len too.
Okay, moving on, uh, recreation commission. We have a copy of the minutes and. They would like us to consider the appointment of David Roston. As an alternate member to fill the term to expire April first of twenty-five.
Like to make that motion. I know Mr. Roston, I think he'd be an excellent addition to that commission.
He served as chairman for many years.
Any more discretion? All in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous, thank you very much. Um, I'm going to move to item G, tax refunds. Do we have any, Chris?
No.
Okay, item H, remarks for the good of the board. Hearing none.
Uh, I'm so, uh, I'm sorry to hear that, uh. Our inland wetlands agent, um, retired, uh, and wish him the best.
I agree.
Thank you for your service.
For your service, very professional service, from what I understand. Item I, items for our next board of selectmen's meeting. Um, which will be a very. Stands to probably be a very long meeting, but if you have any recommendations, Catherine?
Uh, no, I think that, uh, the fact that we're going to be, um, talking about ARPA, et cetera. Uh, I think we're fine. We, we plan for that. The second meeting, the one after that is when we'll talk about the. Give me a second, the. Um.
Savage contract.
Yes. And the other thing too is, uh, if we're able to get the language for the, uh. Savage contract resolved, you know, uh, in, in the next few days or whatever. Bill, there's no, and we're able to get that other contract or mini contract for the wetlands agent. Bill, there's no reason that we couldn't have a brief selectmen's meeting to, uh, reconnect on that and then move those forward.
I hear you. Yeah, I, I, I agree.
Okay, and I would like to try and do that if it's at all possible.
We will work to that end.
Thanks.
Do I have a motion?
Yes, you do. Motion to adjourn.
I'll second that. All in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye, thank you.
Mike, thank you very much. Chris, thank you.